Good evening. I would like to call this special school board meeting of September 5th, 2024 to order. The time is 5:05 PM. We're going to take a brief recess as we wait personnel for one thing. Thank you. This meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2024-2025 final millage rates and the 2024-2025 final budget. At this time, we request that all cellular telephones be put in silent mode. I would like to take the opportunity to remind the members of public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Today's agenda includes presentations on the percentage of increase over rollback rate, proposed millage, budget overview, proposed fiscal year 2025 final budget, a public hearing on the proposed millage rates and final budget, public comment, adoption of the required local effort millage, basic discretionary millage, capital outlay millage, resolution determining revenues and millages and resolutions adopting the final millage rates for fiscal year 2024-2025, fiscal year '25 final budget and related resolution adopting the final budget, acceptance of the 2024 certificate certification of taxable value, scheduling of the final budget public hearing, as well as comments from board members and board attorney and superintendent. Board members, is the motion to adopt the agendas presented? Mr. Persons?
My motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Langford Fleming, motion moved by Mr. Persons, second Ms. Langford Fleming. Please record your vote. Or is this going to be a hand count?
No.
We have the count? Okay, thank you. What was it? Okay, motion carries. Wait, six zero. Okay, I just want to confirm on that. So there were no votes again? Just want to confirm for the record, motion passes six zero. Thank you. Now at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Savage.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, board members. Today represents a culmination of a major body of work as we adopt. This process begins really in our late spring and then culminates today, and I just want to reflect the hard work, not just for the two individuals in front of us, but just a lot of folks behind the scenes who are really doing a major lift to prepare us for this budget which we'll present today. So without further ado, I will introduce Ms. Kelly Letcher and Dr. Amy Desmore.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So this hearing is the second of two public hearings required under Florida statutes to give the public an opportunity to provide input into the proposed millage levy and the budget for this fiscal year. The superintendent submitted his proposed tentative budget to the board on July 23, and the tentative hearing was advertised in the news press on Friday, July 26, the first public hearing being held on July 30 to discuss and adopt the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget. On Thursday, August 29, you received information on the final budget for this fiscal year 2024-25. The second and final budget public hearing being held today was noticed through a direct mailing from the property appraiser's office. That mailed document is known as the truth in millage, or the TRIM notice, and is sent as is required by law. I will second Dr. Savage's comments in that there were many, many people behind the scenes that helped to pull this, all of this information together, and so thank you for recognizing all of those people, including our budget staff who worked so hard to pull this together. And that being said, I will turn it over to Mrs. Letcher to explain all of the details.
Good evening. So as outlined by TRIM requirements, we must first discuss the millage rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage which, when applied to the current year's tax roll, none of any adjustments for new growth would produce the same dollars as received in the previous year. The calculated rollback rate is 5.1549 mils, and the proposed millage rate for '24-25 is 5.286 mils. That's a decrease, or I'm sorry, it's a decrease, sorry about that, .144 mils from the '23-24 millage rate of 5.430, and an increase of 2.54% from the rollback rate. The new millage rate would generate $58 million more than in the previous year because of the increase in the tax roll. This slide just represents the history of our tax roll and our millage rates and the rollback rate over the years. So when we do look at our millages, as you can see this year, our millage required local effort is 3.038, which is a decrease of .144 mils over last year. This required local effort portion is mandated by the state for the board to approve in order for us to participate in the Florida Education Finance Program and receive funding from the state. We also have our discretionary mills at .748, our capital mills at 1.5, which remain the same as in previous years for a total millage of 5.286. As you can see, the millage rate through the years is reducing year after year, and that's because the taxable value is increasing. And when the taxable value increases, the state reduces our millage rate. That our current millage rate is at 100, I'm sorry, current tax base is at $160 billion, which is a 10.61% increase over last year's tax base of $145 billion. So what does this mean for our taxpayers? It really depends on the value, the change in the value of our taxpayers' home, but looking at just one of them, say their value last year was $100,000, at last year's tax rate, they would have paid $543. This year, with the 10, if they had gone up the full 10.61%, the value of their home would be $110,610, and applied to the new tax, or new millage rate, they would pay $584.68, so they would see a difference of $41.68. When you look at someone who has the Save Our Homes on their taxes, which does not allow them to go higher than 3% increase from year to year, someone in that same situation with their taxable value last year at $100,000 would have paid $407.25, and this year at $103,000, they would pay $412.31, so that would have been a $5.06 increase, and that assumes the $25,000 homestead applied to that as well. So what does the millage generate for us? When you look at the 3.038, which is made up of 3.026 in the required local effort millage and a .012 prior year adjustment, that's how they get to the 3.038 mils, that will generate $468,25,885. The discretionary millage of .748 will generate $115,234,813, and the capital millage of 1.5 will generate $231,85,855. So overall, from our local taxes, we'll be generating $814,346,553. Our total budget that we are proposing tonight is at $2.9 billion, $2,911,393,396,000. That's an increase from our tentative budget that we had presented to you at $2,765,457.05. It's an increase of $146 million. The main increases are due to the fund balance estimates that have changed. In the general fund, we went from $1,225,197,933 to $1,270,351,680, which is a $45 million increase. That is made up of the fund balance, and the reason for that big difference is the hurricane funds were not previous in the tentative budget. We had not put the fund balance in that tentative, and they do reflect that here. And we had state grants that had fund balances now that were not reflected in the tentative budget, and that makes up the $40, $45 million. And we had a slight increase in the general fund of 4.2, the fund 10,000, and that makes up the total of the $45 million for that. The debt service fund had a decrease of $2,285,340, and that was all in fund balance. The capital projects fund had an increase of $61,395,762, which was all fund balance increase. Special revenue grants had an increase of $27,681,952, and that, as we have explained before, is these grants will continue to grow as we get those throughout the year. Internal service funds, which is our health and life insurance, is at $225,438,292, which is an increase of $16 million, which is a fund balance increase in our health insurance. Food service is now sitting at $67,960,482. That's a decrease from the tentative budget of $2 million, which was estimated, a decrease in the estimated fund balance. So as we go through these, I would just like to point out, this is mainly for the general public, because you all know the different parts of the budget, but we have six parts of the budget. We have the general fund, which is the main part of the operating expenses for the district. We have debt service, which is the payment of our debts, pays our certificates of participation, or our mortgages on our schools, basically. We have the capital fund, which is used to build schools, buy equipment, and provide maintenance services. We have the food service fund, which supports breakfast and lunch for all of our students. We have, I'm sorry, special, the one before I think was, yeah, special revenue federal, which is for our grants, and they have specific purposes and uses, and we have to follow those reasons and use the funds in that manner. And our internal service accounts, which is our health and our property insurance fund. So our general fund, like I said, is our major source of revenue for the daily operations of the district. It sits at 1.3 billion, or 44% of our budget. We use these dollars to provide resources to our classrooms, to provide reading initiatives at our elementary level. We have some schools that we have an additional 30-minute program at those schools, and this is continuing those programs this year. When we focus our resources to the schools, we focus on the whole child. We focus on the mental wellness of the child, we focus on our English learners, and we provide additional interventions and supports as students need them. Our budget also is focusing on employee retention. As we know, this is a big part of what the board has directed us to do. So I just want to talk a little bit about the Florida Education Finance Program, which is a large part of the funding that we get in the district for the operations. This year, we received $993 million in total revenue from the Florida Education Finance Program. Of that, $63 million is set aside for the Family Empowerment Scholarship. So that leaves about $930 million for traditional and charter schools. This is a $67 million increase over the previous year's amount we received. $18 million of that increase was for FES, and $49 million is for, that we can use for the traditional schools and charter schools. Of that increase, $6.8 million has to be used for teacher salary increases as provided through the statutes. This year, the funds that are generating will generate $9,241 per FTE, which is an increase of, over last year's amount, of $266. We did see an increase in our base student allocation of $191.25 increase, taking us to $5,330.98. And this year, it is a true increase. It isn't moving things into the base. It is a true increase this year. That, when I'm talking strictly about the Florida Education Finance Program, part of the funds, the state funding of that is at 41.5%, and 58.5% of the funds are from local funds, local tax dollars. When you look at the total operating budget, not just the portion that's the FFP, the local makes up 62.56% of the total budget, total operating budget. The state funds make up 36.97%, and we have .47% coming from the federal government. So where do those dollars go? The largest portion of the funding goes directly to our schools and direct school expenses. 72% of it goes into our schools. The other, the second largest goes to our operations and maintenance area at 15% of the budget. The next area is student transportation at 5%, support services at 4%, and then contingency and reserves at 3%, which is mandated by the state. And then we have a small amount in other, which is basically our fee-based programs at our schools. So talking about the contingency and reserves, as I said, the state mandates that we hold 3% in reserve for contingency. 3% is $29.5 million this year. We also hold additional reserves in the budget in case, when things come up, come up, and we know they will, we have money to cover it without going back to the schools and taking money from the schools. So we have money set aside for FTE shortfall, so when the state comes through with adjustments, prorations and things in the budget, we can cover it from there. And we also keep money aside because we know throughout the year, things are going to happen, schools are going to have needs, and we want to make sure we can cover those needs. We have funds set aside that we can do that with. The next part of the budget is the food service budget. It's at $68 million, or 2% of the budget. It includes breakfast and lunch for every child at no cost to the parents, as we are part of the community eligibility program for this year, but we are watching that closely and monitoring it just to make sure we can maintain that throughout the whole year. We have our special revenue fund, which is currently budgeted 88.2 million, or it's 3% of the budget. That is our IDEA, our Title I, all of those grants, and this one will continue to grow as we start receiving that money, more and more of that money from the state, or from the federal government. Our capital fund is at 1.2 billion. It's 40% of our budget. The main source of funding is our local property taxes and sales tax. Our major focus in, with our capital funds is to build new schools for safety and security upgrades, for maintaining and renovating our current schools, and providing technology updates for our schools. The five-year capital plan includes three new elementary schools in the East Zone, two new middle schools in the East Zone, two new high schools in the East Zone, one pre-K to eight, that's the Innovation School, two additions, which are at Bayshore and Fort Myers Beach, two rebuilds, which is Cypress Middle and Hector Cafarota, three remodels, which is Riverdale High School, Benita Elementary, and VPAA, and the black box is included in that. And then we have additions going on at our technical centers as well. Our debt service is $98.1 million, or 3% of the budget. We have statutory requirements that we cannot use more than 75% of our capital millage to pay for our debt, and then the board has recommended that we don't use more than 50% of our capital outlay millage to pay our debt. Currently, we set at 19.3% of the statutory amount, and we set at 28.9% for the recommended debt amount. At the end of the five-year plan, if there are no changes in the plan as it's set, we will be at 34% of the statutory debt amount and 51% of the recommended debt from the board.
Okay, so thank you for listening. We have, the district has worked very hard to craft the budget around the goals in our strategic plan, ultimately to support all 103,000 of our expected students for this fiscal year. So that being said, we do respectfully submit this budget in support of our mission, the students and employees of the Lee County School District, and the citizens of Lee County. And so I turn it back over to you, Superintendent and Board Chair, for the discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Desmore. All right, we stand ready. Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Desmore, and thank you, Ms. Letcher. I appreciate it. And thank you for highlighting the differences between the tentative and the final budget. That is appreciated. So at this time, we are going to go into our first public hearing. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. We'll now recess this special school board meeting and open the public hearing to consider the adoption of the final proposed millage rates and the final budget for 2024-2025. The time is 5:27 PM. Dr. Savage, please continue by stating your recommendations.
Yes, Chairman. Recommendation one, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 final proposed required local effort millage of 3.038 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $468,25,885. The required local effort millage includes a basic required local effort of 3.026 mil and a prior period adjustment millage of .012. Recommendation two, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 final proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $115,234,813. Third recommendation is to recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 final proposed capital outlay millage of 1.5 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $231,855. The total millage will equal 5.286 mils, with a total amount to be raised of $814,346,553. The total millage rate to be levied is more than the rollback rate. It is an increase in the rollback rate of 2.54%. Fourth recommendation is to recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied, and the resolution adopting the final millage rates for the fiscal year 2024-2025. And the final recommendation five is to recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the final budget and related resolution adopting the final budget for the '24-25 school year as follows. General operating budget of $1,270,351, I'm sorry, $351,680. A special revenue budget of $156,169,902. A debt service budget of $98,859,24. A capital outlay budget of $1,161,347,598. An internal service budget of $225,438,292. For a total final budget
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these matters. The time allotted for each public The time allotted for each public speaker is three minutes per speaker, excuse me. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the five recommendations for this budget hearing? Okay? Yes, sir. Please approach and make sure to state your name.
My name is Abdullah Al Farouk. I recently graduated in May of 2023, so I feel like my insight could be a bit unique here. So something I've experienced when I was in Lee County Public Schools is the food was not up to par with what I would consider quality food. I know that you guys are putting in a good decent amount of budget for decent food, but your mission statement being, you want to bring the best potential for your students can't be achieved, in my opinion, if the food that you're budgeting and allowing for your children to eat is not, not only, not of high quality, but not of high health quality. Many of the schools that I've been to in Lee County, because I've been in Lee County since 2008, 2009, all of the food has always been leaning to more unhealthy options. And I think that, well, an issue I think we can all agree in that's an issue in this country is health issues. And I think that having children grow up in a environment where those kind of options are encouraged and the only options that they can't eat for low-income individuals is setting them up for a lifetime of unhealthy eating habits, which will lead them to, we already see how that's happening. But I think that having it where our budget is going to healthy options for our children will make sure that they have the energy in the day to perform productively and to be able to have a blueprint and a framework for them to live a healthy life carrying on. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address anything regarding the five recommendations for this budget hearing?
Hello, good evening, everyone. I actually was not going to speak until this young man got up and spoke. And he is really telling the truth. I have been working for the last couple of weeks with some employees with the district about the food. It is absolutely horrible. I go out to a lot of schools, so I am eating the food, right? I wanted to eat lunch so I could have something to report to you guys. And the food is bad. I want to know if you guys know that as of September the 16th, the students will be getting military-style meals, not hot meals, that they supposed to get for supper. As of September the 16th, they will be getting military-style meals. And with a budget that healthy, our children should not be eating that, right? All of my children are grown, but I do have grandkids in the Lee County School District. You guys need to look at your food program. You need to see what they're doing, what they're feeding our kids, and what they're planning on doing. I was in a board meeting and I think you, some of you guys was kind of praising the idea that we had a supper program. As a child, I was a hungry child. And for us to go from a hot supper meal to military food, that's just not acceptable. So please look into your food program. That's a lot of money for us to be feeding, you know, our kids such low-quality food. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the five recommendations from the superintendent regarding the budget? Okay, seeing none at this point. I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the special board meeting of September 5th, 2024. The time is 5:34 PM. The board will now consider each of the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Savage, please restate your recommendations individually, allowing the board the opportunity to vote before moving on to the next.
Yes, Chairman. First recommendation, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 final proposed required local effort millage of 3.038 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $468,025,885. The required local effort millage includes a basic required local effort of 3.026 mils and a prior period adjustment millage of .012.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve said item? Mr. Persons.
Make a motion. We approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Persons, second by Ms. Langford Fleming. Do we have any board comment or discussion? Okay, seeing none. At this point, please record your vote. Are we able to get the screen that shows the voting feedback? Okay, motion carries seven zero. Dr. Savage, please present recommendation number two.
Yes, Chairman. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 final proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $115,234,813.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve said item? Mr. Persons.
Make a motion. We approve the superintendent's second recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Persons, second by Ms. Langford Fleming. Do we have any board member comment or discussion? Okay, seeing none, please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Savage, please go on to recommendation number three, please.
Yes, sir. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2024-2025 final proposed capital outlay millage of 1.5 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $231,855. The total millage will equal 5.286 mils, with a total amount to be raised of $814,346,553. The total millage rate to be levied is more than the rollback rate. It is an increase in the rollback rate of 2.54%.
You've heard the, board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons.
Make a motion. We approve the superintendent's recommendation number three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Persons, second by Ms. Langford Fleming. Any board member comment, discussion? Okay, seeing none, please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Savage, please present recommendation number four.
Yes, Chairman. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied and the resolution adopting the final millage rates for the fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation for item number four. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons.
I make a motion. We approve the superintendent's recommendation number four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Persons and second by Ms. Langford Fleming. Do we have any board member comment or discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. And your last one, Dr. Savage, recommendation five, please.
Yes, Chairman. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the final budget and related resolution adopting the final budget for the 2024-2025 school year as follows. The general operating budget of $1,270,351,680. The special revenue budget of $156,169,902. The debt service budget of $98,85924. The capital outlay budget of $1,161,347,598. And the internal service budget of $225,438,292. For a total final budget of $2,911,393,396.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board members, you've heard superintendent's recommendation for item number five. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons.
Make a motion to approve the superintendent's budget recommendation number five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Persons, second by Ms. Langford Fleming. Is there any board member comment or discussion? Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. I just have a question, please. And I know the last time that you presented to us, you had shared the fact about maintaining and watching the food service. And again, you just mentioned it again this evening. So I just want to make sure, because I know it's the 68 million, and it was a decrease of 2 million. And how are we, and why are we still watching that? Because I just want to make sure I recall why we are watching that, those funds.
Right.
Especially because it's food service.
Right, watching because it's a self-supporting fund, so the revenues need to cover the expenses of such. And so the balance of that related to how much revenue we're drawing in from however we draw it in, whether it be CEP, whether it's federal funds that support it, or student or parent fees, if there is a fee for breakfast or lunch versus the expenses inside of the fund. Labor and food costs, transportation costs, all of those things. So that's why we're making sure to monitor, to make sure that it does sustain itself, revenue related to expenditures as the fund balance in the fund is continuing to decrease.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I understand that when I'm reading this, it's saying free. So I want to make sure that we are able to provide for our children.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Next on the board agenda is comment. Ms., I'll start with Ms. Juvenelli. Oh!
I'll be quick. I don't really have anything other than, thanks for all your hard work on this. And I would love to have the conversation again regarding the fresh food that we talked to about the lady we met in Tampa. And I'm going to send her an email to send to everybody to update us. And I was going to see if they do warm supper. Somebody mentioned that, and I want to know more about that and see if they do that, like a hot dinner for some of our students that receive that. But I think that we maybe need to look into some, a better quality food if we have the opportunity. I don't know, you know, what it's going to cost, but that's in your wellhouse, ladies. Thank you.
Ms. Patrika.
Thank you for always breaking this down in a way that I think the public can consume, if not fully understand. Because you guys are smart. This is really, really, really hard part of what the district does. I've always been very grateful to you guys. Really happy to see English learners in there as a focus because I think that unless we start to improve in that in other areas, we're not going to see any movement in terms of education outcomes for kids. And I'm hoping that at the end, perhaps Dr. Savage could address the concerns that were raised regarding food. I will tell you that having four children go through this system myself, none of them ever loved the food. But we do, I mean, 68 million sounds like a lot, but it's really not a lot when you're feeding the number of students we're feeding, breakfast, lunch, and in some cases dinner. So it really is not a lot of money. And it's really, really hard to put very palatable food out for that large number of people with the small amount of money we have to do it. So if you could just address some of the concerns that were raised when it's your turn to speak, I'd appreciate it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I'd just like to thank you again for always keeping us aware of what is taking place. And I definitely would like to have information regarding the military food, whatever that looks like. I can't even imagine what that, being in that industry, it's really hard for me. So whatever information we can get, I appreciate it. And thank you so much, ladies, and your team.
Mr. Persons.
I'll save mine for later.
Okay, Ms. Langford Fleming.
Yes, thank you for taking the time. I know this is a huge lift. And especially, like Ms. Patrika said, to break it down for the, for not just the board, but the general public. I, of course, agree about the, the food situation. I've been hearing that since I actually was on the campaign trail. I heard it a lot. It's actually one of the number one complaints I heard from students. So it's, and that's, you know, we have to listen to our kids. But as far as this incredible budget, I know that it will probably, as usual, make headlines. And I just want to reiterate that it's our job to make sure that we are being as conservative as we can with our taxpayer dollars and listening to our stakeholders and what's the most important to them. So, and thank you again. Appreciate it.
Ms. Morgan.
First of all, I apologize for arriving late. I really am embarrassed to have not met your expectations with respect to my attendance. I will also say that this is my last budget meeting. Yeah, and, you know, I have been impressed by you and your team since I arrived on the scene 12 years ago, and you have never disappointed. You are incredibly smart, really gifted when it comes to figuring out how to work with people about managing their money, whether it's in the schools or, or in the district. And I just have great appreciation for, for what you all do. Thank you very much. I do want to say, with regard to the food program, I do have a question for you, though. I recall at one time, we had so much money in the food service program that we were able to refurbish kitchens around the district. What has happened? Why is the, is it the per pupil amount is shrinking? Is just costs have gone up and, and the amount of money hasn't changed?
Thank you, thank you for, for asking that. The, the number of meals or students or participation definitely hasn't gone down. It's, it's gone up. It's increased. But I think what we're dealing with here is a couple of different things. First of all, the reimbursement rate that we are beginning to receive for our meals when we're under CEP, right? Based on the rules that they have and how they kind of group the schools and the percentages in which they reimburse, based on the data that you submit, that we submit to them, that reimbursement rate isn't as high for a number of meals as it once was, which impacts the revenue. So that has come down. And then, of course, costs have gone up, right? Food costs have gone up. Our wages, which are a lot of the, of the budget, has gone up. Benefits costs have gone up. And then we added some additional costs in there related to transportation of food because at one point, recall that we had our vendors who no longer could drop ship to locations. So we had to centrally manage that. So there's been kind of a, a perfect storm of those things, which is why we do have to keep analyzing. Can we continue under that CEP umbrella? Or must we move, at least in part, to a different structure in order to be able to balance out revenues? Because if we're not receiving full reimbursement for some of our meals, which at this point we are not, then, you know, we may have to consider that if it is to sustain itself, right? So it's kind of a perfect storm of, of things along the way that kind of led us to where we are right now. Not to say that some of those conditions may not change and we're looking to do some things. One of the vendors that, our main food vendor that we're working with now, GFS, they've, they've now gone to drop shipping at our high schools, which are larger locations. So that will help us mitigate some expense in that transportation arena. But we continue to try to do things to balance out, working very hard for that.
Thank you. That's great. I appreciate that. I also have a suggestion with respect to the kids' complaints. Why don't we have, just like we have an advisory committee, why don't we have a food advisory committee? Why don't we get kids from the high schools and the middle schools to meet with cafeteria staff, to walk through the, the food prep, understand what it is that we're, we're doing? staff, to walk through the, the food prep, understand what it is that we're, we're doing? And, and I know we're doing some gardening, and not that that would really have a significant impact, but I think people don't understand what the staff deals with behind the scenes. And I think it would be really helpful if kids and staff work together to really understand what it is we're doing with our program, and there may be opportunities that the kids see that we don't. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no comments outside of saying thank you. Turn to Bree Bruno. Do you have any comments?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Savage?
I just want to echo Ms. Morgan's appreciation. This will be my last budget meeting with you all as the superintendent, so I'm, I'm also just want to echo exactly what Ms. Morgan said, just the tremendous competence that you've shown over this process, my ability to observe that firsthand. And also just to answer the board question, we did have the two speakers. I made a notation about the concerns of the food program, particularly military food as well, and then just also, just in general, just to provide a more substantive, comprehensive information to the board members that you have kind of an awareness of what are those challenges. I also appreciated the specific comment on the CEP and the impact that that has on the balance of the revenue side, I think. But we're going to focus this update more on the, the side of the quality of the food, and if it relates to that particular revenue side as well, try to highlight that for the board members. It will probably take some time to put that together, but we certainly, you know, doesn't preclude the budget, obviously, going through. We need the money to be able to feed the students, but in terms of the quality that we put forward, we want to make sure you, as board members, are armed with an understanding of that piece, and we certainly will stand ready to engage any additional groups that we think could react to that information as well, once you have a chance to consume it. So thank you for that as well, and that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 5:52 PM, and see you in eight minutes.